You're watching WSTV Digital Media.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the October 8, 2015 meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the pleasure of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America. Here's a writ of order where we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live by one of some TV digital media. It'll be rebroadcast at 10:00 AM Friday morning and again at 4:00 PM Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today is a consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes and there is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one will be permitted to speak unless a board member asks a question. For general use district zoning request, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district. Therefore, the petitioner may not refer to specific use for the property. For special use district zoning, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of our agenda require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken today by the planning board are recommendations that go to those bodies for their consideration. If you're addressing the board today, before you begin your remarks, please give us your name, address, and the zip code for the record. First item of business approval minutes is September 10 and 21 meetings. Any additions, corrections?
Over from Redmond.
Motion Mr. Mulligan, second Mr. Lamb, in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now I'll call on Aaron King to present our consent agenda.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First item on the consent agenda is item B1. It's zoning docket W-3273, and this is a request to rezone about 10.6 acres from RS9 to IP institutional and public. And you can see the site there in yellow on the screen in front of you. You see the existing church located on the property. It's on the south side of Kernersville Road, north of High Point Road. And looking at the area, you can see that the zoning pattern is predominantly RS9 residential. There is some institutional to the south of High Point Road for the cemetery that's there, and to the northwest for the existing school that's also zoned IP. Our staff reviewed this. We felt that IP was a reasonable zoning district for the existing church and given the surrounding zoning pattern, and we would recommend approval of this IP request.
Okay, thank you. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Saying no one, but declared the public hearing closed? Motion from Mr. Lamb, second from Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B2. Zoning docket W-3274, and this is a request to rezone about 9.3 acres, limited industrial to entertainment district, special use, limited zoning. And you can see the subject property there highlighted in yellow on the map. And to get it oriented, it's kind of bounded on the south side by Ninth Street, on the west by Trade Street. Railroad tracks kind of bisect the property. And on the east side of the railroad tracks, you've kind of got Chestnut Street and Eleventh Street. You can see the existing zoning pattern in the area. The subject property is primarily industrial right now. Again, it's got the, gets industrial buildings on all of the property. To the south is the existing entertainment zoning district where Ziggy's is located and the other buildings associated with that. To the west, you've got some properties zoned LI and an existing church that's just west of this site. This was originally sent to you as just a general use E zoning district request. Since that time, the petitioner has had a community meeting, and I believe some of the stakeholders raised some concerns. Some of those concerns were about the use Entertainment Facility Large being located on the western portion of this property. So basically, everything between Trade and railroad tracks. The petitioner has agreed to remove that use, prohibit that use, on that portion of the property. So as such, he did amend his application and change it to a special use limited request that allows for that use to be excluded on the western side. Again, it can still be located on the eastern side, east of the railroad tracks, just not on the larger western portion. Couple points about the entertainment district. We don't deal with this district a lot. It's kind of new. It is a fairly restrictive district. It only allows about 40 different land uses. Primarily a mixture of commercial, residential, and some industrial uses to allow those existing uses to keep functioning. It does have the performance standards and conditions for lighting and for crosswalks, as opposed to the LI district which you currently have there that's fairly intense and allows a pretty wide range of industrial activity. So staff's reviewed this, and we would recommend approval of the revised entertainment, special use, limited request. With this added condition that's before you, under other requirements, the use of entertainment facility large shall not be permitted on the following pin numbers. And those pin numbers basically describe that property I mentioned to you before, east of Trade, west of the railroad tracks. So with that, staff would recommend approval.
Again, no one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Saying no one, would declare the public hearing closed? Motion from Mr. Lamb, second from Mr. Mulligan, sure.
Mr. King, that area in between the Y of the railway tracks, who is that owned by?
That's right away.
That's just right away of the railway tracks? So that's why it's considered being contiguous in terms of the E there? And so the railway never will be able to sell that land in between or whatever? I mean, how does that handle?
I wouldn't say that, but I don't, right now it's considered right away, so it's considered contiguous. But certainly, they could abandon it right away in the future.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I just had a question too, and this is just curiosity. How often is the track used? Is that, is that track used quite a bit? I mean, the train track?
I don't know the answer to that question.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
Petitioner's here, and he may have, he may have a better answer for you on that than I do.
It doesn't really matter. I was just wondering.
We have a motion for approval. Any other discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, last item on the consent agenda is item B4. This is zoning docket F-1556. And this is a request to rezone about seven acres from RS9 and RS20 to limited industrial. And you can see the subject property identified in yellow on your map in front of you. This is located on both sides of Ridgewood Road, north of 311. You can see the existing zoning pattern in the area is a mixture of residential and industrial LI zoning as you get closer to the intersection there. Board members may remember, we did have a request about a year or two ago. If you can see where the mouse is, this little piece right here of LI, it was rezoned from RS22 LI. Area plan calls for the two pieces in yellow to be industrial. So staff is supportive of this LI request.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Saying none, declared the public hearing closed? Motion from Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right, next item on your agenda is zoning docket W-3275. The petitioner is Westview Development Company. And the property is 2.34 acres located on the northeast and northwest corners of High Point Road and Glen Landing Drive. And the request is a general use request from AG Agricultural, where the minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, a little bit less than an acre, and RS20, where the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, single-family residential, to RS12, where the minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan. It's located in the southeastern portion of the county, actually within Winston-Salem in the yellow Growth Management Area 3, where urban services are provided. It's located along High Point Road, which is a major thoroughfare. This is the zoning map showing the subject property there in the center, highlighted in yellow. It's currently bookends of the entrance there into the Glen Landing neighborhood. The property is undeveloped. It has dual zoning on it. The northern portion is zoned AG, and a little bit of history on that in just a moment. The southern portion is zoned RS20. Currently, the property owner could develop this property with five potential lots, depending upon how they deal with the wetlands and potential, and the floodplain that's down along from Muddy Creek in the southeastern portion, southwestern portion of the property. The proposed zoning would allow a maximum of seven lot yield. So this zoning request basically would allow them to build two more lots above the five, which they're currently could, could develop now. Just briefly, a little bit of history on it. The southern portion of the property, which is zoned RS20, that was part of the Durham Heights subdivision, which was recorded in 1952. Many, many years later, in 1994, the property owner for the Glen Landing Development, which is zoned AG now, and pretty much built out, as you can see, those black spots, those are, those are homes there, received a preliminary approval, subdivision approval, from the planning board. That was in March of 1994. And as is currently often the case when a developer gets preliminary approval from the planning board, several months, sometimes even a year or so lapsed before they come in with their final plat that's recorded in the Register of Deeds, and then that shows the lotting pattern there is reflected on the tax maps. That's when they're ready to start putting the infrastructure in and selling off lots. So several months lapsed before the final plat was actually recorded. As many of you know, in 1994, December 31, 1994, we adopted a new countywide comprehensive zoning ordinance, Unified Development Ordinances. That was adopted several months later, after the preliminary approval was done. When the preliminary approval was done, all this area was actually zoned R6 that allowed for 10,000 square foot minimum lot size when water and sewer is available, and 20,000 square foot lot size when sewer and/or water is not available. So the plan, these lots here, they're actually, they range from about 12,000 to 12,750 square feet. There are a couple lots that are significantly larger than that, but the average range is 12,000 to 12,750 square feet in Glen Landing. So that was certainly consistent with the minimum lot size of the R6 that allowed to go down to 10,000 square feet if water and sewer is provided. So when we did the comprehensive rewrite of the Unified Development Ordinances, we also rezoned all the properties in the county, gave them new nomenclature, designations for all the properties. And at this time, there was no sewer out there. It was really a pretty rural area, farmland and woodland. So this, this property was zoned AG Agricultural. Again, due in our inventory, we did not, you know, take note that we had previously approved a preliminary subdivision on this property, and that may have never been recorded for all we knew. But anyway, it was zoned AG at that time in December 31, 1994. So later that year, in 1995, they came back with their final plat that was recorded and put in the infrastructure, the water and sewer and streets, and started building, building the homes out there. And again, now it's pretty much, pretty much built out. So that's a, hopefully, a somewhat clear little history snapshot there. And I'm certainly available for questions later. But while we're on that, if anybody has something that they would like to, be glad to answer any questions on that history, if that makes any sense. Okay. Thank you. Aerial photographs showing the subject property, these two lots are wooded. See the homes to the north. It's located within the Southeast Suburban Area Plan. It was adopted in 2009. The yellow is low density, a single-family residential, and that's the recommendation for the subject property and all the area that's around there that's currently zoned residential. And basically, that would recommend a density of up to five units per acre. And so the request at RS12 is certainly consistent with that. The purple would be industrial for the uses along over Temple School Road and Union Cross Road. Couple of images taken on site. This is looking north on Glen Landing Drive, from approximately its entrance there on the High Point Road. There at the entrance, High Point Road, this is looking west. Back up at the top of the hill, this is looking down south onto Glen Landing Drive, with High Point Road in the background. So the subject property is on either side of this entrance, within the development of Glen Landing. This is at the intersection of Glen Landing Drive and Patsy Drive. The RS12 district, again, with a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet, is consistent with the average lot sizes of the existing lots within Glen Landing Development. Again, the general range is 12,000 to 12,750. It's also consistent with a low-density residential land use recommended in the Southwest Suburban Area Plan of up to 12, up to five units per acre. And again, the existing zoning would allow up to, the existing zoning now is up to five lots, and the proposed zoning would be up to seven lots. So we're, we're just talking about a two-lot difference. Staff's recommendation is for approval. Again, there is public water and sewer out there. It's on a major thoroughfare, and it's within the city limits of Winston-Salem. The standard zoning district for city, single-family neighborhoods is RS12. Excuse me, RS9 in most of Winston-Salem. There is some RS12 zoning, but, so this is, the request is for RS12. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. Any questions of staff?
How does the flood area and that marsh area at the bottom of the property affect the building on that property? And do you know if that floodplain map has changed since the 94?
Yes, I think there was a revision of the floodplain maps in either, it was actually 1998, and I think there was a more recent revision in, maybe 2010. But you can build in the floodplain. It's not encouraged. But as long as you have your lowest floor two feet above the base flood elevation, which they would have to show on a survey, you can build in the floodplain.
If it's in the floodway fringe?
Right. You cannot build in the floodway, which is the immediate area outside of the channel. I don't know if there's any floodway on this, but you can build in the floodplain. As far as the wetlands requirements, I really, that's, I'm not that familiar with the limitations on that.
Looking back at that picture, if we could, is, is that dark blue the floodway?
Yes.
In that, so there is a tiny corner of that?
It just barely cuts into that southwest corner there. So most, most of it that is designated in some ways floodway fringe.
Okay, and so when somebody builds or builds up property in a, in a floodway fringe, that of course makes the water go a different direction or, or changes it slightly in terms of, of its flooding pattern, right?
It displaces water a little bit, but that, that elevation takes into account development within the floodplain.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this time?
One more question, Gary. I just want to clarify my understanding. So the lots being proposed, the seven lots being proposed, are comparable in size to the current lots?
Well, the proposed zoning would allow lots that are comparable in size. This is a general use request, so we don't obviously have a site plan showing this exact proposed lotting pattern. But, you know, we, we looked at it pretty closely, and, and it's possible to get a lot yield of seven lots. And those would all be at least 12,000 square feet. And again, the lot range in Glen Landing is from 12,000 square feet to 12,750 square feet. So very consistent with what you see there in Glen Landing now. There are a couple of larger lots in Glen Landing, but the predominant, the predominance of the lots are about 12,000 to 12,750.
Okay. Would the proposed zoning allow for lots significantly smaller than that? Or do they have to be in that range you described?
They would have to be at least 12,000 square feet in size, yes.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Gary, I had a question about the wetlands. Would they be able to fill in the wetlands and do some kind of mitigation? Or would they have to leave those, leave it be?
It's my understanding that the Army Corps enforces that, and there is opportunities to do some fill if they approve that on a case-by-case basis. But I'm really, I'm not that familiar with those, with those standards.
But they, but they could not do anything in the wetlands without a wetlands permit.
And I also had a question about the trees surrounding the wetlands. Would they have to be retained? Is there any stream bank issue that would require them to retain some trees or not?
That would probably fall within that watershed permit. There is a buffer yard that's required along the actual channel of the creek. But as far as, does that apply to flood, to wetlands, I'm not sure. The actual channel of the creek, Muddy Fort Creek, is, is all the subject property. So they would not have to retain that. I think it's a 30 or 50-foot buffer there.
Right.
But there may be some planting required if there is wetlands designated. I apologize. I'm just not that familiar with that. But, and they would have to meet that regardless of whether the zoning is approved or not, obviously.
Explain to me about the community meeting, neighborhood meeting on this.
And that's something you want to talk to the petitioner about.
Okay, I was just wondering if, if there's anything he collected. I'd be glad to.
Nothing other than what's in the report, probably.
Okay, okay.
And George is actually scheduled for the 27th, so it hasn't happened yet.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Thank you, Gary. Signed up as a proponent, Mr. Godfrey.
My name is Brant Godfrey. I'm the president of Westview Development Company, 2831 Bidding Road in Winston-Salem, 27104. I developed this property in 1994. We had to build a sewer outfall when we developed Yaton Glen, which is nearby. And the outfall came by Glen Landing and property, which is now Glen Landing. The only reason that this part of the property was not platted and built upon at that time was that we could not sewer it with gravity sewer. The sewer line runs along Patsy Drive, which is north and uphill from this property. And I don't care to pump single-family properties to sewer. So we did nothing with the lots. A few years ago, Winston-Salem put in a gravity sewer line on High Point Road. And because of that, the lots cannot be sewered by gravity. That's the purpose for asking for the rezoning, for the lots to be essentially the same as what is in the neighborhood.
Thanks, sir. Do you want to ask a question about the meeting?
Yes.
Give me the, the history on a neighborhood meeting about this, since we have received some letters and concern.
I had a phone call from the councilman for the area, and he stated that it was his policy to have neighborhood meetings. And he scheduled one for the 27th, I believe, at a recreation center near there. And of course, we'll be there.
So have you had any conversations with anyone yet?
I think I've had three or four phone calls from people in the neighborhood. There's actually one, and I don't know if they're here or not, but I owe one of them an apology because I lost his phone number and didn't call him back. So if he's here, I apologize for that. I've had three or four conversations from people who did contact me, yes.
What, what kind of hardships would be encountered by delaying consideration of this until the neighborhood meeting?
None, really. It's been 20 years.
Well, the city's played along here. It's been good?
No, that's, that's, I'm happy to talk with folks and at least have them understand what it is. Entering into it, it seemed a very simple thing. I didn't realize it would be controversial to continue with what's already there. I'm happy to do whatever seems reasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Godfrey.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Saying none, then we'll turn to the opposition. First person signed up, Richard Heller.
Good afternoon. Again, Richard Heller, 4100 Sell the Drive in Glen Landing, 27107. We have a group of about six folks here, all homeowners within the neighborhood. We've got a larger group of probably 30 or 35 or approaching 40 that are on the email distribution. Myself and another gentleman that lives in the neighborhood have been kind of the, the point people in terms of getting everyone together as a group. We contacted Councilman Taylor and voiced our concerns, and that's how this neighborhood meeting has resulted. And so we're very pleased to hear that no action will be taken, potentially no action will be taken until that meeting. Our, really, our main concerns are really twofold, one of which is probably not much to stand on. And that is, if you go back to one of those pictures, it showed the entrance when you looked up the hill. That neighborhood is a, is a nice neighborhood. We've all, the homeowners here have all been there almost since the beginning. We've really enjoyed it there. It's been a great neighborhood. And one of the things I think we all like best about the neighborhood is that it's, it's kind of tucked away a little bit. Okay, and I think it really adds to the intrinsic value of the neighborhood, that when you come in, you've got that really nice, pretty entrance way into the neighborhood. Westview Development owns that property. We respect the right to, I'm a businessman. I understand that if you own property, you want to, you want to develop it, you want to make money. That's one of our concerns that probably isn't very valid. We would love to see it stay the way it is because it provides a very nice, welcoming type of entrance way into our neighborhood. With that being said, our other main concern is, and not understanding all the nuances of the zoning numbers, RS20 to RS12 and all that type of thing, wasn't necessarily aware that that resulted in kind of a net equal lot size. Our main point of contention is that, and the gentleman who just spoke mentioned, he's been involved at the beginning. When, when I bought my home, it was Hubbard back then that was the developer. Okay. But all the houses that were built in there were essentially, regardless of the lot size, were all essentially, I would guess, at current property values of, let's say, $130,000 to $170,000 ballpark. A lot of two-story homes, a certain amount of single-story homes, all the two-car garages, really all in a pretty close proximity value-wise. All of that nature. To my knowledge, the only substantial work that has been done to the neighborhood over the last even 15 years, since really the neighborhood was originally built out, quite a few homes, probably seven, eight, nine, were built way in the back of the neighborhood, down at the end of Sell the Drive. And we're worried that what happened down there is just what's going to happen here. And that is, all the houses that were put down there were what we would refer to as kind of almost substandard to what the rest of the neighborhood is. They're almost all single-story, one-car garage, and they wound up turning into almost, I shouldn't say almost exclusively, but I would say at least a half or two-thirds of them have turned into rentals. Because I just don't think they're the type of houses that people who are looking at that price range of homes want to buy a, a smaller home in that type of neighborhood with a one-car garage that doesn't really fit in with the rest of the neighborhood. So we're concerned that with the smaller lots, or what we thought were smaller lots, that we'd get another batch of homes that would be at the front of the neighborhood that would really just detract from our neighborhood and bring our overall, you know, median home price in the neighborhood down. Because the group of houses that went in down at the bottom of Zelda eight or 10 years ago unequivocally have done so. Because they're, I would guess, they're all in the 90 to $110,000 price range. And I know how real estate works. It's all based on comps. They look at the neighborhood as a whole. So we're just concerned that the more lots that get squeezed in there, if it goes from five to seven, that means instead of five homes similar to what we've got now, we're going to get seven smaller ones. Add that into the fact that it's right there at the front of the neighborhood. You're out looking for a home, and you drive in there, but you see these kind of lesser value, lesser quality homes, smaller homes, that kind of detracts from the neighborhood as a whole. So we're just concerned, we want to maintain kind of the integrity of the neighborhood and not bring it down by having a whole bunch of small houses packed in there. So that's our main point of contention, and we hope to... So that's our main point of contention, and we hope to discuss that more detail with Councilman Taylor and thirty or forty of our neighborhoods. So there's, there's a fair amount of, of concern about this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Dale Phillips?
Yes, my name's Dale Phillips, and I live at three-nine-seven-oh Patsy Drive. And the backyard of the one on the left coming into the entrance would be the, I guess, the last house built on the left. My, in, in the back is all, it was an old pond, and then the back's been cut out of the pond. And in my yard on the side, I got a drain, I've got a big ditch that runs off into that property that's going to be put behind me. So I have that concern, you know? What would they do? Would they fix my ditch? They run a ditch down through so the water don't go behind the yard and the mosquito fest is down? It's about, I have to throw the little rings and mosquitoes, so I don't get the mosquitoes on my back porch, and that's how bad, that's how wet it is. You can go there now and it can go up to your ankles, something like. I was just wondering what, what would be done? Or how, how they would fix that? Then I wouldn't have the trees for a buffer in my backyard anymore. It ain't like you can't hear the interstate and the new three-eleven and the old three-eleven. The trees do help. Without the trees, you know, we're really going to have a lot more problems. That's all I got to say.
Thanks, sir. David Ammons?
Hey, David Ammons. First house on the left, thirty-nine eighty, Patsy Drive. I kind of echo what both of these guys have already said. I think for me, it's been mainly just concerns with how it would affect my property value. Rich also mentioned, mentioned the beautification of the neighborhood, how you kind of feel that inviting feeling when you drive into the neighborhood. That's really why I bought the house five years ago, was because of that. Of course, corner lot too, that was appealing to me. But then, of course, from what Dale says, the concern over the watershed and what would be done to our yards to be able to handle that properly, so that's a concern as well. But I think the biggest thing is, for me, is property value. The, the tree line provides kind of a sense of privacy. I know there's houses all around me, but that was another big, big rub for me for this. I think there's still some questions on how it would look, right? So that's, seems like it's to be answered, but just wanted to voice my concerns about that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up? Is anyone else that would like to speak? Saying no, now declared public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Let me just, for, just for clarity's sake, explain a little bit about the limitations of zoning, because there, the subject was brought up about concerns that a certain type of zoning would, well, there are concerns about the size and price of housing. And as you know from all of our sessions before, can't really use zoning to, to control the price of homes, the size of homes, and all that. The only thing zoning can do is control the lot sizes, their densities and all that. There's some pretty severe legal constraints in using what some of the courts have called exclusionary zoning practices to control the price of homes, the size of homes, and, and things like that. So the only legitimate thing that could be looked at is what should the property be zoned in terms of lot size or density there? And of course, the fact that you do have existing lots in the subdivision that are around the same size as what's being proposed for rezoning, that's something that has to, has to be kept in mind in, in looking at that. The other thing is, is trees, and of course, what's being requested here is a general use rezoning, so unless the petitioner was willing to do special use that would guarantee in a site plan that some trees would be preserved in certain locations, or if, or if on the other hand, they were willing, he was willing to do, enter into some agreement with the neighborhood through restrictive covenants or whatever, those are the only things that could be done to guarantee trees being preserved in some, in some areas. So I just wanted to clarify on, on, on those issues as we go forward. I know, regardless of whether the planning board takes action today or in the future, those would be things that we need to keep in mind.
Can I ask you a question about that, Paul? The neighbors are concerned about compatibility, and I understand what you said about not, we can't control housing size, but in terms of the configuration of the homes on the lots, that lotting pattern, which maybe is something that, under special use zoning, could look at, would that be appropriate, looking at the compatibility?
Well, looking at the property and the street, there's, I mean, you pretty much would have to have lots that front on Glen Landing Drive there. That's about the only way they would be able to be developed. So then, it's only a question of how big the lots are and how much frontage each lot will actually have on there. So it really depends on, I mean, and again, we're talking about the difference between the existing zoning allowing five lots by right and what's being proposed here, the RS twelve, which would allow seven lots, but they would all, under either scenario, they would all have to front, they, they would have to have their frontage on Glen Landing Drive.
The lots are going to be about the same depth as every other lot in there too, so the width is not going to be almost the same as what's on the other streets.
Yeah, you'd get the same sized house.
On the right parcel, you'd probably have a couple of wider lots, just because that's another little deep piece of property.
I, I wrote out there today, and, you know, I'm not sure what the petitioner's plans are, but, you know, I, I don't know that they even build seven. You know, I don't know what he's going, how much he's going to do in that flood way, so I think we could be talking here in between going from five to seven, we could be talking going from three to five or whatever. I think the RS twelve would just allow him to get maybe four or five lots in there without getting down into the lowland, but, but we don't know that. So, anyway.
Well, is, is there any, are we in just general discussion?
Yeah.
Is, is there any harm in, in letting the, the neighbors get together with the, with the developer? It sounds, I mean, it sounds very reasonable in terms of what the aspects of this, but I'm, I'm just sorry, the sequencing of that, I did have occasion to talk to Councilman Taylor, and, and he said he would really appreciate if, if that process could occur before the planning board took a look at it and processed it for them.
Why didn't you schedule a meeting before?
Yeah, I know. So that was my concern, and, but it was, it was factors beyond control evidently, but it, there has been so much interest in this that I think that giving them an opportunity to, to talk with the developer and, and work that through has, has certainly been the historical preference of the, of the planning board, and I would certainly move for a continuance to give them a chance to do that.
Second. Mr. Godfrey? You okay with a continuous, sir? We have a motion for continuous discussion on that. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We'll see you next month. Okay? Thank you. Staff report.
Okay. A few items here, none particularly long. I'm looking for Tara, I don't see her, but, oh, here we go. Well, I want to introduce the person who is replacing our, our senior administrative assistant, and so this is Tara Jolly, who just started with us last week, I believe. Yes, and she comes to us from the City Transportation Department, where she, for several years, was a senior accounting clerk, and prior to that, she worked with the Finance Department of the city, prior to that, with the U.S. Postal Service, and with the U.S. Airways, and Blue Rhino. So she has both private sector experience and public sector experience, and we are very excited to have her on board with us. Her job of getting oriented has been made a little bit more difficult because Shelley Stewart, who you all know, is on medical leave right now, so, so Chris Frye, her predecessor, who is working in human resources, is doing some double duty, kind of working back and forth with her, but Tara is getting, getting into the job, and we are very glad to have her here. So. A few other things, we have some area plan meetings that are coming up. First one is the East Northeast Area Plan. The council hearing is November the second, so first Monday in, in November. The Southeast Suburban Plan, where we already had the kickoff meeting last month, is going to have their next meeting October fifteenth, Thursday. And then the Southwest Area Plan, that's the Greater Ardmore and other area around that, will have their kickoff meeting November the nineteenth there, so. Roots Day is Saturday, October twenty-fourth, and that will be along West Clemensville Road, the part that has recently been improved and widened in there, so it'll be very nice to have some tree planting going on in there. And then, just so you know, we have two more presentations left on the Winston-Salem Architectural Heritage Book. They're on October twentieth and twenty-sixth, and so those meetings have been really well-received. Our Heather Fernbach, the author, has done a wonderful job in each and every meeting, doing a really tailor-made presentation to that particular area there, so I went to one last week, and it was, it was time well spent, but just pass that along. And I think that's it for staff report.
Okay. Anything for the go of the order? Mr. Mulligan?
I just want to remind everyone that this is cancer-awareness month, and remind all of the women, and men too, men have breast cancer, but to remind everyone to check themselves and, and get, get rigor checked up, because early detection is the key to, to this terrible disease. And with that being said, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Mr. Second? All in favor? We are adjourned. If you did.